Good evening and welcome to the Shelburne Planning Commission meeting of July 27th, 2017. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda is approval of the agenda. We'll consider a motion to approve.
Second.
Moved by Kate, seconded by Dick. All in favor? Aye. Our agenda's approved. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of July 13th, 2017. The minutes have been included in everyone's packet. I will consider a motion to approve. Can we just move first and then we can open it up for comments? Moved by Jason. Seconded by Dick. Any discussion? Kate?
Yeah, I have, I guess maybe two small comments. Let's see, on page two, at the bottom, where it says, starts, the sentence starts, "The town aspires this area to feature." I was thinking it maybe, it might be better to say that this, the town aspires for this area to feature, something like that, just something in there. And then, ah, just, let's see, on page three, the code uses targeted approaches to improve the overall pattern and quality of development. After reading the rest of that sentence, I, I don't have my, my other notes in front of me, but that just didn't seem to kind of garbled. I was wondering if we could just end it there. Excuse me, sorry. And then go to form-based code was adopted as an optional zoning district. Excuse me, sorry.
So would the id- Does anyone want to take a guess of, is she suggesting that we end the sentence after the word "development," or? Delete everything after, so, "And seeks to leverage underutilized existing assets." Okay.
Sorry, I had blues lyrics in my head.
Kate, just to-
I know.
Just to confirm, we're, we're-
It's my son's ringtone.
We're going to add, we're going to stop the sentence after the word "development." We'll add a period there and then delete everything after that. Is that what you're?
Yeah, and then maybe just, we could have the last sentence or phrase, "Form-based code was adopted as an optional overlay."
Okay.
A zoning overlay.
No objections to that change, I assume? Anything else from anybody? Hearing no comments. We will take a vote. All in favor? Aye. The minutes of July 13th, 2017 are approved. Next item on our agenda is disclosures relating to any potential conflicts of interest. With respect to any agenda items, seeing no hands, hearing no voices, we'll move on to the next item, which is open to the public. Opportunity for public comment on non-agenda-related items. Anyone? No? Okay. So we will move on to Agenda Item Six, which is a continued discussion of the update to our comprehensive plan. We have a few sections that we're aspiring to tackle tonight. The first of which is Parks and Recreation. And Andrew has been kind enough to take the lead on this section. It's a, it's a weighty section, so I commend you for-
I have to say, I did pick it before I looked at what was behind it. It was more the title that appealed to me than the size, and I thought, oh, bonus.
So we can, the edits are somewhat minimal, but some of them may be worth discussing. So why don't we just open it up? Andrew, I don't know if you want to preface any of the comments. I know the memo had indicated that this has already been reviewed by Betsy in Parks and Rec. Okay. Which is good, and she's generally comfortable in-
Yeah, and then I tried to incorporate feedback from the community, especially the folks on Bay Road that were concerned about paths and, you know, connectivity, so I guess if Dean can call it up. But the, you know, Item Seven, in terms of the objectives added in there, just says, quote, "Ensure the existing roads and houses are not impacted adversely by future path connectivity." And then sort of address that later on in the recommended actions. There's sort of two parts to it, or actually, I guess, three. On number one, where it's recommended actions, the last bullet, I added, "With input solicited from landowners and taxpayers impacted by the proposed amenities." And then, number five, which was to continue to expand the path and trail network, I added, "While also ensuring that future paths do not negatively impact existing roads and home sites." And I'd initially, I think, had that as number nine. Yeah, which you can see on Dean's here. So I kind of just cut number nine and added it in at the end of Bullet Five, because it was kind of the point.
This is just the printed version, so you're, okay, I'll get the live version.
Yeah. Yeah, I just gave it another pass a couple of days ago and sort of realized it was redundant to add a whole separate ninth objective that could, it could fit above.
Oh, I see, so you tagged it on to five?
Yeah.
Yep. While ensuring that future paths, something like that?
Yep.
Yeah.
So, as somebody who, who likes to try and kind of cut things down the middle a little bit more, I do have a concern that we could, we could get into a situation where people are, you know, negative impact could be in the eyes of the holder. So I would like to add, and I think this is respectful of the folks on Bay Road, two of whom are here, and I live in that neighborhood, that, that we need to work on some sort of a manual that provides clear information about what is meant by making something, you know, pedestrian-friendly, or, I'm not sure how, how to say that, but I think that would be, you know, if we could, one of the things that I think those of us who live in the Bay Road neighborhood were taken aback by was, you know, the massiveness of, of the facilities that were being proposed, and, and that, you know, kind of came out of the blue, the, the massiveness of them. And, and I think many people who were, might otherwise be in favor of supporting more pedestrian facilities were really kind of left with a bad taste in their mouth. So, so I, you know, I, this is such an important thing in terms of livability and the ability of, of all of our residents to be able to get around safely, that I just, I think some kind of a qualifier is important. And, you know, maybe we could still, like, a placeholder, like, you know, the town should work to, you know, create an effective manual for, you know, that informs how bike and pedestrian safety can be achieved in contextually appropriate manner, in, so as not to adversely affect neighborhoods. So, so that, that would be my suggestion.
I feel the same way. I'm struggling with this because it's a, it's an easy section in some ways, because it's short, but this is a tricky concept, you know, given some of the, the background. And I also feel like if you take this to sort of the far end of the pendulum, it could become a full stop on any attempts we make to connect neighborhoods or otherwise build connectivity throughout the town. So I'm, I agree with you, Kate, that we need to find some kind of more objective approach to this, and it's not going to be a quick fix to do that. So we might have to just, along the lines of what you're suggesting, try to develop some language that helps sort of-
I think, I think-
-set the stage for what we need to do-
Predictability.
-in order to make this a, in order to trigger this, right? Like, we want to make sure that there's some baseline level of criteria, right? Before we can just say, just because it happens to cross a homeowner's lawn, they're adversely affected, right? So in every, almost every instance, when we build new infrastructure in much of the town that's already developed, it's going to be a conversation that we just have to figure out, how do we do this objectively without, without having time to sort of build all the, the criteria around what we mean by contextualized?
What if you just said, instead of not negatively impacting, minimizing any, you know, I mean, the whole point would be that, yeah, I mean, it's a trade-off, right? But the point would be to minimize that as much as possible, that some people may be more directly personally impacted than others. But you're trying to mitigate, you know, hugely egregious impacts, but acknowledging that, you know, part of living in a community and sharing resources is that, you know, everybody kind of has to pitch in or may take a little bit more of the brunt than others. I mean, I think, yeah, I definitely see what you're saying about not, not wanting to say we will never negatively impact, but to keep negative impacts to a minimum.
Well, I, you know, I just, I think what Jamie's referring to is, you know, we have, in, in our town, we've seen it many times, there is a lot of deference given to the folks who don't want something. Actually, quite a bit more than the folks who do want something. And it are, it's, you know, it's the ca, it's the cases, the burden is placed on those who want something, even if it makes quite a bit of sense and is very much supported by many, many people, the burden is still on those folks to, to make the case for doing something like this. And, and I just, I think we're capable of, you know, coming together and agreeing on things. I just think that paints a, an artificial idea of who we are as a community. I think if we can just come together, what people seem to not appreciate is surprises, negative, you know, surprises where, you know, their property's taken away, or something like that. So I just don't want to-
Well, and that was, seemed to me, the biggest issue in the past, stuff I dealt with, with our neighborhood and other things. So that's why I tried to accommodate that with the idea of input solicited from landowners and taxpayers impacted by the proposed amenities, just because that was the big deal, right? People coming in saying, "There's a line on a map that goes through my property." Well, that's just a sort of a line drawn in a general area that you would like a path. There was never any plan to specifically put a path there, you know? So I think people got the idea that, oh, gosh, this is happening across my property. It was more that the path committee was sort of drawing lines in general areas. So, you know, and that was the big ask from a lot of people, with the ones I dealt with in the Boulder Hill to the Heights, you know, was, we would just love to have been consulted a little bit more about this. And once you got it, and I agree with you, once you get everybody at the table, you tend to be able to find some, some compromises. And I, you know, and again, just, I tend to be pro-path, pro-connectivity, pro-alternate modes of transportation than just cars, so, but, you know, being sensitive to the fact that people have lived in a particular piece of property for a long time, and then suddenly seeing that being, you know, damaged or impacted in some way can be shocking.
I was going, I sort of liked how you reframed it with, I think everybody, I don't know, could get on board with minimizing negative impacts. I don't know if others feel differently, but I think we could all agree that that's probably a-
Yeah, and working with-
A shared goal here, so it's just a question of-
With landowners.
Yeah.
Do you want me, I was just going to say, you could also say, while ensuring that the negative, or any negative impact of future paths, I don't know, now that you started to type, I had a phrasing in mind, but-
Ensure that negative impacts to existing roads and houses are minimized?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
And somewhere in this, this section, and all sections, it should say that there is an active effort to get neighbors participating at the beginning, instead of showing them the, the proposed project when it's finished. That would have saved a lot of time on Bay Road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If they could have been involved at the beginning.
Yeah, well, that, yeah, so-
So what I've captured, I'm hoping is, oh, you're, you're down. See, I didn't, okay, yeah, I should just leave it alone. You guys want to, heck, heck, heck.
Well, that's why I brought it this time, was I was watching you kind of go, and I was like, all right, I could chime in too.
Okay, so if, well, I'm going to just go back to my chair. What I thought people were saying were, while ensuring that negative impacts of future paths-
I just added the "to."
To existing roads and home sites are minimized. Okay, anyway, I'm going to go back.
How do you feel about that? Is that reasonable? You're okay with that? Okay.
Yeah. You know, maybe, maybe adding something about character of the area in there, does that, does that help? Something about character of the area, just, you know, sort, so it suggests the outcome that we expect, you know, that it's not going to negatively impact the character of the area, you know, which would automatically rule out, you know, the, the 12-foot wide thing that was shown. So, let's see. Okay, character of the area, great.
That is hard, because those things do get really subjective, really quickly. But I think that the key points is to minimize negative impacts, as, as you brought up, and the, and then communication, ensuring that landowners are aware. And I was thinking back, it was years ago, but there was a, I think it might have been a planning commission meeting where they were doing something out near my property, and I'd gotten something in the mail a week beforehand saying, hey, this is a topic, your property is near what's happening, wanted you to be aware. Things like that are good. But then it gets tough if mailing lists aren't updated and that sort of thing. So I don't know if that was a one-off, or-
Do you remember what it was?
Yeah, it was-
Was it Airport Road, was it the tower?
No, it was the, the owners of the airport wanted to carve out a piece of the airport property for their house.
And you're in a butter on the airport property? Okay, so that, yeah. It's a required notice of the butters.
Oh, okay. Oh, so somebody that was in the area that might be impacted by it, but doesn't a but, wouldn't have known about that kind of thing, right?
Could you take the mic if you could? Sorry.
The other issue for me would be safety, you know, and I don't know if that would incorporate a look at the safety of what's being proposed. It might, you know?
Safety in the sense of-
Yeah, well, safety to the, you know, walkers and the bikers and, and people in cars, and, you know, as Kate's saying, what was proposed in Bay Road ends up, it always became most more dangerous on some levels. So I, I would be a concern, because that's my biggest concern, I just don't want to see anyone hurt.
Right.
Yeah, and I think implicit in the goal of adding bike paths, right, would be because you're concerned about safety, that you're taking them off the road and off shoulders onto a, you know, protected right-of-way. So I mean, I definitely hear what you're saying, but I feel like that's sort of implicit in the idea of building out facilities for alternate modes of transportation, would be to take them off the same surface used by 2,000-pound pieces of metal moving at high speed, you know?
But because of that, you get more people biking who aren't as comfortable biking on heavily trafficked roads, so I agree with you. Yeah, I think the public safety piece is important. We have to figure out how we layer that in. I, I equally get concerned about negative impacts being interpreted as someone's crossing my property, and there's a, there's a trail here. So it used to be a quaint little quiet place, and now there are actually pedestrians and bikers going by. That's, that's what we get, I get concerned about, that being perceived as negative when the broader goal is to really enhance.
Just as a reminder, the transportation section of the plan has subsections, including one on bikes and paths and sidewalks. And so there's more specificity in that, including reference to the use of standards, which is some of what I think is Kate's concern, but it's also, it's also a recommendation or policy of the plan to follow standards, because by following standards, you're using what's considered in the literature to be a safe design. So maybe safety of the design is something you address there. Rather than trying to deal with it in the rec section.
Yeah.
If I may say, like, there is typically also, like, when there are trade-offs engaged, you can have, like, clear-cut criteria, like, say, safety or accessibility, or greenhouse gas reductions, recreation, and then some project interventions can kind of like meet certain criteria, but fail on others, or, so I can, kind of like minimizing impacts is one thing, but if you want to, like, explicitly recognize the trade-offs that are involved, you can just clearly lay out the criteria and-
Say it.
Say that.
Yeah.
And some of that actually, at least as far as energy and some of the benefits of non-motorized travel, we're going to be, we'll have an opportunity to talk about in just a couple of minutes.
To some granular on that, so. Gail, did you have a comment?
I just thought, you were talking a few minutes ago about abutting landowners and proximity and character of the neighborhood, and I'm wondering if you have to define a distance from whatever is happening, so that you don't have people just randomly saying, oh, well, you know, that path is a block and a half from my house, and I don't want people walking by my house.
Yeah, no, I agree with you. I think that's when it starts to, the pendulum swings to just the absurdity of people who live two miles away, considering that an impact to their home, so I don't know how to solve that.
Well, that's an example of, like, a criteria of noise pollution, for example, like, that's, distance is a measure of that, like, or, so you can have, like, at that criteria, like, you want to minimize noise pollution. That's like in specific adverse impact.
Yeah. Key destination residential areas. So maybe, that's a good call-out, Gail. Maybe we say, "To existing roads and home sites within the," I'm trying to think of how to capture that, "within the proximity of the proposed-"
Would you want to say localized negative impacts?
Localized.
Qualifying impacts to those that are local.
Something like that, just to try to zero in on.
And then you have to define local and, you know, but then you, but then, to the point of criteria, if you have criteria for a given project, but then-
You get into Bay Road, you have everybody who drives on Bay Road as well.
Right.
Are they able to participate in it?
So let's do this. I, I have a feeling this one is going to attract some more attention within the town once we get past some of our initial work on it. Hopefully, that's the case with all the sections, it's not always the case, but when the select board does start to get into the, the town plan update, I think that will be maybe an opportunity. In the meantime, we'll, we're going to come in and out of this in the transportation section and elsewhere, so I think we'll have an opportunity to revisit it. But for now, I think this is a good, good start on the update. Andrew, thank you for taking a first pass through that. Anybody, yeah, go ahead, Dick.
One comment, I think that something that's missing is no mention of wildlife or habitat. Should be a concern as well.
In terms of impacts to wildlife with new infrastructure, or-
Yeah, putting a trail into a park, for instance, I don't think a lot of consideration is given to, you know, you're putting a, you're calling it a wildlife trail, but yet you put it right through the heart of an area that is important to wildlife?
Right.
And then wildlife is gone.
Well, but on the other hand, just to, to, you know, offer the other side of that, that has been used as a way to try and stop a path from getting built at all, which then means all of that carbon impact on the roads created, because people can't get around. So I think maybe something about be sensitive to, you know, wildlife impacts, or seek consultation from, you know, Gail's group, or something like that, but I really-
Could that be-
Feel that's important to not use that as a excuse to not allow a path.
Could we add that, no, I agree. Could we add that as a bullet to the Parks and Rec master plan? Objectives, to make sure that they-
Consider wildlife.
Consider an invent, wildlife and natural resources inventory?
Habitat.
Yeah.
Or maybe even as part of identify, identification of future parkland trails and greenway corridors, something there about wildlife?
Which one, Andrew, was that?
So the fourth bullet says, "Identification of future parklands, trails, and greenway corridors," and then some sort of either second phrase or sentence that says, you know, while minimizing, you know, something about minimizing impact to existing wildlife or wildlife corridors, or, I mean-
You could say greenway and wildlife corridors.
Yeah. Yes.
Also, in the transportation section, though, there's a reference to primitive paths in parks, where we could address some of that as well.
Okay. Could we add, "And wildlife corridors?" Or you say, "Greenway and wildlife corridors"? Is that Andrew doing the edits?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, yeah. I like that, Tick, that's-
That's simplest.
Is there a way to be able to put in there that there might be consultation with the Natural Resources Committee? And I, because I know that we have management plans for a number of the properties, and often when we conserve a property with a third-party organization, they maintain a management plan for the property, and so just having that required consultation could help to ensure that some of that consideration would happen.
With respect to the wildlife corridors?
With wildlife, where there might be rare plants that are in one place and not somewhere else on that property, or something like that.
What's the official title of Parks, the, your committee?
Natural Resources and Conservation.
That work there?
I like it.
So that, this fourth bullet now reads, "In consultation with the Natural Resources," "and Conservation Committee, Identification of Future Parklands, Trails, Greenway, and Wildlife Corridors." Sort of like with the last bullet, where you're getting input from the paths and bike and pedestrian paths.
Yeah.
That's good. Okay. Anything else on Parks and Rec while we're taking our first spin-through, or? Okay. Very good. We'll move on to the next section, which is the energy section. And we're fortunate to have Melanie Nadel with us from the Regional Planning Commission. Welcome, Melanie. Good to see you again. Thanks for all the work to date. So I should say, as part of the energy section update, I think we address transportation and energy collectively. Is that right? Or do you want to just zero in on energy while Melanie's here and then peel back?
Melanie developed all of the edits that you see in that file, so I didn't break it out.
Okay.
I might suggest that you-
Start with transportation, okay. Great. Turn it over to you.
Okay, sounds good. So there's a lot of material, like you said, the edits that I did were in the transportation section as well as in the energy section. Do you have a copy of the, of this review of the checklist?
Oh, that was distributed a couple of weeks ago, I guess.
Okay. Because this is sort of the framework that I used for choosing the specific objectives and goals and language in the transportation and energy section. This is the framework that the Department of Public Service and the Regional Planning Commission will be using to evaluate whether the comprehensive plan meets the Act 174 standards. So I was thinking that we could go over that.
Okay. Could you do me, could you do me a favor for our newer members? Could you just give the two-minute nutshell on what Act 174 is and why it's important, and why we've been lucky enough to engage the RPC to help us develop language?
Yeah. Okay, so in, I think it was, in 2016, the legislature adopted Act 174. And what Act 174 says is that regional planning commissions are required to update and enhance their regional plans consistent with the 174 standards. Town plans have an option to do it. The 174 standard is a combination of enhanced language dealing with transportation, so encouraging alternative fuel vehicles, alternative modes of transportation, so bike paths, connectivity, ride-sharing, transit, encouraging concentrated development. There's a section about energy efficiency, so it looks at energy efficiency from buildings, from appliances, from streetlights, so it's very comprehensive. It looks at sort of the, the policies and the pathways for getting to the comprehensive energy plan goals. That's the, that's the heart of, of Act 174. It's helping the- It's, it, helping the state of Vermont to advance the state comprehensive energy plan goals, one of which is obtaining ninety percent of energy from renewable sources, electricity generation mostly, weatherizing a certain portion of buildings, you know, and there's, there's milestones to track region and town progress and then.
By 2050.
By 2050, yeah, yeah. There's a set of analysis and targets that a region and a town needs to go through to give a sense of what the order of magnitude change is, so how many electric vehicles do you need, how many heat pumps, how much energy efficiency from the electric side needs to happen. So that's sort of the, the overview of what 174 is. And so by adhering to the 174 standards, a region or a town would be given substantial deference in public service board proceedings, or the public utilities commissions, they changed their name. And that is the quasi judicial board that reviews certificate of public good that is needed for any renewable energy generation facility. So if a plan meets the 174 standards, they're given substantial deference, which means greater weight, the public utilities commission will apply the land use measures and other specific policies in the town plan in their decision when they're looking at the orderly development criteria. That's when the, the town and the regional plan have a role in, in their decision making process. So is that, is that good? Any questions about 174, just in general, before we get into the comprehensive plan?
How much, how much does the state put behind it in terms of, you know, dollars or is it just, I mean, like, just like when you mentioned electric vehicles, you know, most other states have, for example, credits for buying one and Vermont does not, you know, so seems like they're asking but not giving a stick but not a carrot.
Yeah, it's a, it's a good question and kind of out of the scope of what we're doing with town plans and regional plans, but, I mean, currently there are, like, Green Mountain Power is giving incentives for electric vehicle purchases because they have tier three requirements as part of the renewable energy standard, which, I guess, you know, invites utilities to start looking at ways to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. So I think that state policy is kind of, is catching up with the comprehensive energy plan goals.
Got it.
But it may not necessarily be within the influence of the regional plan or the town plan, and so that's why, you know, having language in your town plan about partnering with utilities or say Drive Electric Vermont to bring these opportunities, these incentive opportunities or just education about electric vehicles is really important.
I have a question about the coordination between regional planning commissions and the town governments or plans. So how do you kind of really, if there are conflicts in terms of like regional connectivity or like you have like regional goals that can be met, but there are certain towns that might not have the desire to implement those kind of measures that you're proposing, what, what type of sticks are you thinking about?
So we have a, the regional planning commission has a process whereby we review town plans just informally like we're doing now, and then working with the municipalities going forward to develop their municipal, municipal plan. And part of our policy is that the town plan needs to be compatible with the regional plan so that the municipal, the municipality can be considered a, given an approved planning program from the regional planning commission. So that, that process seeks to work out any issues between the municipality and the regional planning commission.
Thanks.
Okay, so since you don't have a copy of this, I will sit here and just scroll through. Oh, you have the remote control.
I can, I can advance it, but I was happy to let you drive too.
Okay, no, that's fine.
Can we lower the lights a little so that's more visible or is that?
We can switch them and we'll see if.
I need some light for the cameras as well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sure, one third won't work.
We're in a good compromise already.
Okay, that's all right.
It's really small, I understand.
We can blow it up.
Yeah, you could just expand it a little bit.
So the, where?
Want to go to tables?
Yeah, so this is the determination checklist, like I said, that we would use to review the comprehensive plan in light of 174. One of the standards requires for the plan to be duly adopted by the municipality. That doesn't apply because we're just using this as a review. The next section talks about the energy element language that is already in chapter 117 and has been for many years. And so I checked that, that has been met, given that the comprehensive plan has had an energy element to date. And then the next section about analysis and target standards gives you a sense of what the Act 174 standards is asking for. And through this analysis, I've assumed that you've met that standard because of the energy data guide that was sent to you back in April. And that is, I could show what that looks like. So that's this memo that talks about the number of electric vehicles that the town needs to plan for, how much, how many heat pumps the, the town needs to meet in order to meet the state comprehensive energy goals. So basically, so long as the town uses this data in the energy element in the comprehensive energy plan, you're assumed to have met that standard, understanding that the data that we recently sent is in, in draft and there will likely be another iteration of it as, you know, the data and the process evolves. So that's on the regional planning commission to develop and provide to the town. And then in terms of the pathways, again, you know, those are the standards that talk about building, energy, conservation, efficient use of energy. A lot of the content that I added to the energy section is intended to meet those standards. There were some areas where additional content was needed. In terms of the plans, energy element containing a statement of policy on patterns and density of land use, I think that the comprehensive plan is in good shape regarding that. Standard number nine on page 10, I guess you're trying to keep up with me, there's a question about the plan's energy element containing a statement of policy on the development and citing of renewable energy resources, and I added some content to enhance that section. And so I think now would be a good time to flip to the energy section of the comprehensive And so you'll see my note where I suggest an individual goal statement needed on renewable energy generation and citing. That, you know, that's a, a required standard. I took a stab at that and that would be on, it is the third page on the bottom, and that's to promote the development and use of renewable energy sources in new and existing residential and non-residential areas while minimizing any adverse impacts of such development. So I took a stab at that, this. And any of the content that I suggested for the comprehensive plan to meet the 174 standard is, is a starting point. You know, I look to the planning commission and the town to figure out what is appropriate and, you know, feasible for the, for the town of Shelburne, but this is sort of just an example of what could be in your comprehensive plan to meet the 174 standard.
So that section, sorry to interrupt you.
No, that's okay.
That is the facility, the renewable energy generation facility citing? That's what we were referring to, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the, the closest statement that I could come up with, not really having a good understanding of where, you know, the town of Shelburne's position is about renewable energy citing. It's not very specific, I mean, it talks, the objectives underneath that goal talk about, you know, supporting solar arrays in the built environment, promoting incentive programs to install solar projects. The third one talks about consider updating zoning regulations to require the installation of solar PVs for new construction. The next one i- is a strategy for promoting and adopting zoning regulations that require passive solar design. The fifth one is, is something to pay attention to, and that's consider identifying preferred locations which are not automatically designated as preferred. So the state net metering rules say that a project couldn't, can only receive the enhanced net metering credit so long as it's identified in a duly adopted town plan, if it's not one of the automatically preferred sites, which are rooftops, landfills, gravel pits, parking lots, so like think previously disturbed sites. So really limiting the ability to do greenfield development, so that's why in that comment I, you know, invite the planning commission to think about whether there are preferred locations where you would like to see these facilities.
And would that tie back to the maps that have been developed? Is that something that you'd recommend we, if we were to spend a little more time on trying to develop a map that speaks to preferred, whether it's solar or wind?
Yeah, so you're referring to the, the maps that show prime energy areas. So those, that mapping analysis is pretty generalized at the state level and it's, and we're at the regional, in the regional plan, we're not using those maps to say that this is where renewable energy generation should go. It's not a statement of suitability, it's a state, the maps are showing areas that have high potential and an absence of local or state constraints as a way to demonstrate that there is enough land area free from constraints to accommodate renewable energy generation, but really it's, it's the whole land area because you really can't assess really specifically a site's energy potential until you get down to the site specific. So I would look at the whole town in, in identifying preferred sites. So I, I wouldn't let the, the, the prime energy areas be a limiting factor.
So I have a question about the type of renewables that you're including, is it just solar and wind, but what about the biomass, like say methane digesters and geothermal for example?
Yeah, so the focus is on solar and wind. We do have maps in, in the regional plan that show where the biomass resources are, but in terms of the renewable energy targets, there's one, there's one target that's technology neutral and it's, it's hard at the regional level to say, you know, town X, you should consider a biomass plant. So it's really up to the municipality to say, this is, you know, what our regional target is and this is how we feel like we can meet it. Maybe it's all solar, maybe it's all wind, maybe it's a biomass plant, maybe it's methane digester at the wastewater treatment plant. So there's, there's a number of different ways where the targets can be met.
And then the RPC decides whether it's compatible? Is that the idea? So if we were to just mix and match, right, like maybe biomass is a better fit for Shelburne? If that happens to be a predominant approach, then that's something that, when we're looking to be certified?
Yeah.
Right, that's part of the?
Yeah, so all technologies are sort of on the table at this point, yeah. But the focus is on the solar and the wind because there's a lot of, you know, citing, you know, issues around that and you can, you can map it, so that's why. But the plan does have policy statements about hydro, although we're not necessarily recommending new hydro sites, it's just looking at whether there's untapped potential on existing hydro sites.
I'm sorry, one more, like about, what are the, like, interventions that you're making about conservation of energy, like say smart meters and, there's a lot of like those incentive programs that are being discussed, like in the sense of like time of use, pricing mechanisms or some of those other?
Yeah, that's a good question. So in terms of conservation, energy conservation.
Well, wasn't there a line for by 2050, reduce energy usage by a third?
Yes, yeah.
But I, and I had a, I don't have the document in front of me, but I had a note on that that I wasn't sure what that baseline was, because at least in the draft that I saw the baseline had been stricken, so I wasn't sure if that is something that has come up.
Um.
Is that?
Yeah, so.
Comprehensive energy plan you're talking about?
Yeah, it was, I don't, I don't know if it was this one.
The reduced by one-third target for conservation, is that?
Yeah, that is a state comprehensive energy goal.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think whatever I read, this wasn't what I was initially looking for, but.
Well, we talk about conservation throughout this a bit, in the new text, it looks like.
Yeah, it was, well, all right, to reduce local energy consumption by more than a third by 2050, but the part that was stricken was fifty percent from 1990 levels by 2028 and seventy-five by 2050.
So that's a, that's actually a typo, so it was, it was a mixing and matching of the greenhouse gas goal and the conservation goal. Like the words just got mashed together. But it is a, a reduction of total energy consumption by one-third. And so that's.
From where?
Yeah, so that's a good question. And off the top of my head, I don't have what our total energy consumption is at the county level, but it is baked into the, the transportation energy, the building energy, the thermal energy in the data guide, because the, the LEAP model that we worked with VEIC on uses the comprehensive energy goals as a guide to model what fuel mix we need and what our total energy needs to be in, in 2050. So I know, I can't give you like a, a hard number right now, but hope that you take comfort in the fact that the goals are, the mo, the energy modeling that we did are based upon that one-third reduction of total energy.
You know, one of the things I, I find kind of still frustrating about this process is the emphasis seems to be so much on energy generation. And, you know, avoidance is, is, is the biggest thing you can possibly do. And being able to get, walk around, have transportation, transportation choice in your community is the easiest and most effective way to cut carbon, your carbon footprint more than anything. And, you know, so I get, I have to say, I, I realize we live in a rural state, but, you know, are, are we as towns, if, if we were to say, you know, what we're, how we're going to meet our energy goals, we're just going to put sidewalks everywhere. I'm not saying that we're going to do this, but just in theory. Would that preclude us having to have a wind farm or a bunch of solar arrays? I mean, could we, would we get, get credit for that or is the legislation really weighted in terms of, yeah, but how much energy are you producing for the green grid? I mean, do we, how, how is that sort of measured? Because it seems like it's really, you know, it's, it's discussed as something that's ideal and sort of nice to have, but it's not really, it's not given a, a specific value. Yeah, and I think it's incredibly important, particularly in a place like Shelburne where, I mean, hell, I think there'd be a lot of people who would be very interested in, you know, connecting the whole place up with paths and things like that, if we could avoid solar arrays and wind farms here. So, you know.
Yeah, I, I mean, I agree with you. I think it is really important and, you know, transportation is our largest contributing sector for greenhouse gas emissions. So if you look at the transportation sector. Um, so if you look at the transportation sectors, uh, section, I added language about, you know, how transportation represents the single largest energy consumption. Um, did enhance some language about, um, paths, uh, making it, uh, easier for transit, you know, getting at those alternative transportation options. But I hear you that, um, you know, the the data analysis is really focused on getting to the, um, the renewable energy target and it's about generation, um.
Yeah, it all, I mean, it all assumes that everything's going to be the same. We're all just going to get around by cars all the time and continue our sprawl-dependent lifestyles.
Yeah.
It'll just be kind of, you know, without carbon, um, fuels. But, um, I, y- uh, there's a cost to that too, you know? I just, I just think that it would be nice if this could be a little more well-integrated. I mean, we're talking in our land use, um, you know, about trying to organize patterns of development more compactly so they have, uh, you know, a a lower impact overall on the land and that it will be plausible and easy for people to get around, at least for local trips, without cars and things like that. And it just seems like, um, I don't know, we're, we're, it's not really quite working at common purpose here.
Just to segue on that, sort of stepping back, bigger picture, how how rigid is the analysis by the RPC, the certification piece, in order for our energy or our plan, I guess, to be certified? Is it a, is it a lockstep sort of here are the criteria? Or is it a little more nuanced in the sense that, wow, these guys really are emphasizing conservation and even outside the energy section? You know, they're thinking about conservation PUDs, they're thinking about really, you know, smart type development here that might support more broadly? But maybe, I'm just struggling with how does, what does your analysis look like? So that can help inform changes we'll make once we get into the nitty-gritty of line by line?
So as it stands, the one-seventy-four standard for reviewing town plans, which I went over, um, is the criteria that we will be using once we review, um, what, yeah, so that's what this is. And it does consider total energy, you know? So it looks at, you know, transportation, alternative options. It looks at, um, you know, land use patterns that discourage sprawl and, you know, encourage a concentrated development pattern and conservation and efficiency. Um, but I think to Kate's point about how all the data is just really focused on renewable energy generation, I I see that. I mean, right now, the framework is looking at alternative transportation modes through the policy language, not so much the data. So, and we are doing another iteration of the LEAP model to get at just that question. How much can we r- reduce our renewable energy generation piece by doing those kinds of things? Walking more, taking more transit, being more connected? Um, you know, there's some model limitations on whether the model is really sensitive to that. But, you know, pulling the vehicle miles traveled lever, like if we get lower on the vehicle miles traveled, our, you know, total energy demand will go down, so maybe we don't need to generate as much. So we're, the best answer I can give you right now is that we're, we're looking into this. And, you know, over time, when the town plans are updated and enhanced according to energy and the regional plan is as well, we're working with Efficiency Vermont and other partners to figure out what, what is the suite of data that we need to track progress on the state comprehensive energy plan goals across all the sectors, across transportation? So, you know, maybe it's looking at DMV data and really seeing the type of progress municipalities are making on reducing vehicle miles traveled, so, um, you know.
But near term for us, you know, if our objective is to sort of have a certified plan, it's more about the the policy-type level language and less about the, call it capacity, right? Targets where you're looking at whether it's those maps or otherwise and figuring out you can jam this much solar and wind into a town, and if you're not at X percent by X date, then maybe we won't certify you.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of, there's, I mean, the the standards are big. I mean, it's, you know, it's a twelve-page document, so it is nuanced. Um, and, uh, you know, don't get tripped up by the targets. Um, I mean, they, you know, they they need to be in the plan, um, but it's, think of it as just a a a pathway for understanding, you know, Shelburne's responsibility for meeting the state goals.
So, so are you saying that if sh- if we were to write that section of the town plan saying, you know, Shelburne chooses to focus on avoidance of energy generation, that would be cool with you guys? Would that pass muster?
And and then.
And then we talk about how we're going to do it with this deep commitment to building, connecting everything up with paths and sidewalks and things like that, so.
It's a hypothetical question.
It is a hypoth- yeah, no, and I appreciate it. I guess if that's going to be the the p- the position of the town, that, um, you know, you are not allowing solar arrays or or wind turbines or any new facilities, I guess w- we need to know that from a regional plan perspective, because then the onus falls on other municipalities and we need to figure out how to, how to make that up and, you know.
Yeah, I guess that's what we're trying to tease out a little bit, is what is our, you know, preferred allocation, right? And I, we've looked at some of the data around, we have X megawatts as of, you know, this date and then capacity.
Right, we talked about it several months ago now.
Would be driven by some of the map.
My, my reaction to Kate's suggestion is, is that while it sounds nice, reducing the overall number of trips and reducing demand relative to Shelburne still doesn't do anything about increasing the contribution of renewables as the generation source. And so we're, we're just, we're not dealing with that piece of it.
Okay, but that, but that clarifies what this is really all about, which is, is the emphasis is on generation of alternative energy, not so much on.
Supply side.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, it's really, I think that needs to be fleshed out.
The framework that towns have been given in order to have this elevated status is you, you are, you're in this system.
Yeah, and don't shoot the messenger either, the legislation's the legislation, right? We have people in Montpelier who are adopting this, it's not the RPC.
Right, no, right.
But it's not being known, I mean, one of the goals is to reduce total energy consumption by more than a third.
Right, it's, it, it sort of says that, but then it just seems like the language, I just want to be clear that, that if we, you know.
It's also a lot easier to measure, right? You can say, we're going to build X, and that's pretty clear, versus we're going to reduce, which is a diffused request that not everybody can comply to, right?
Depends on how good your data is.
Yeah.
No, but I mean, you're, you're, like, as a municipality, you can say, we're building these things, right? We all commit to them and as, but to get every individual person to commit, you know, to reducing their usage of fuels is a lot harder to, you know, guarantee, I guess.
Yeah, just because we would have a town-wide network of paths and sidewalks doesn't mean that everyone else is going to substitute walking for cars. I mean, the the opportunities are there, it's kind of like the theory of transit. The theory of transit is you want to make it accessible and in time when people pick up on it. But in the short term, there's no control over the public's willingness to substitute one type for, one mode for another mode.
Yeah, I mean, and to add to what you you said, in reality, um, you know, not driving at all and conserving energy isn't going to get us to the state energy goals. And, you know, one of the goals is reducing one-third of the energy consumption. And transitioning the transportation and heating sector to electricity is a way to achieving that one-third less energy consumption, because electricity is more efficient. So using electricity to power your vehicle or heat your house is a more efficient means. So you're, you're getting to that one-third less by transitioning over to the electric sector. And we need to increase the amount of electricity that we are generating in state to meet the increased electricity demand.
So I have a question about the performance indicators. So really, you're looking at the energy intensity reductions, uh, of the usage compared to a baseline period? Is it like kilowatt-hours used per person or is it like VMT per person? Or is it more like carbon intensity? Or is it like the total absolute carbon dioxide emi- emissions compared to some baseline periods? So I'm not clear about what type of performance metrics you are like really looking at to kind of like track from the base. And what is the baseline period? Is it like a baseline period or is it a baseline trend line compared to what you look at the reductions?
Um, so there's a lot of data. So we're loo- we're looking, we're using the, um, the long-range energy alternative planning tool. And it, it was done at the state level. Um, and so, and the Regional Planning Commission didn't run the model. Vermont Energy Investment Corporation ran the model. And so it gives us total energy for the transportation sector, um, for the heating sector and for the electricity s- sector, and it's regionalized.
So those are the kilowatt-hours consumed.
It's not necessar- it's not, it's MMBTUs, so that you can look at energy types across all different sectors.
Got it.
Um, and then it is apportioned out to municipalities based on the number of vehicles in that municipality, the number of households, or the number of commercial establishments. Um, and it's really just, and 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 it's a model and it, that's not necessarily what's going to be used to track progress. We're working with Efficiency Vermont to use actual data that they get from their customers and their, um, you know, through their incentive program to see what kind of change is happening over time.
Right, so if I understand correctly, MMBTUs would, if you're using those as the performance metric, then the generation is just one factor in that. Like, so if you are, so those are fungible between transportation, residential energy, commercial energy sector, housing sector. So I don't see that. It's not just focused on the energy generation issue, it's more like a fungibility across these different sectors. So it's just like, you calculate BTUs per person consumed, whether it's your transportation consumption or it's a housing residential consumption. So they all translate those to the BTUs and then basically, those are fungible across different sectors. So you cannot like really focus only on the energy generation, it's like across the sectors. Is that correct?
Yeah, so what I just described is, uh, consumption across the sectors and that's sort of one separate thing. And then there's the total energy, renewable energy generation that, um, the state is planning to accommodate in state. And so that's like, I think, it's fifty percent of their twenty-fifty projection will be accommodated in state. And then the regions are all getting a portion of that based on population.
I see.
And so they're, they're, they're kind of separate, just in terms of what needs to be done in the individual three se- three sections, heating, electricity and transportation. And then when we're making the shift to electricity, we also need to be generating more electricity to meet that shift.
So that would be a second performance criteria or indicator as compared to the BTU person criteria?
Yes.
So that would be like, say, some kind of like a renewable energy mandate that each town have to follow?
Yeah, but it's not, don't think of it as a mandate.
It's more like a certificate, kind of like.
It's, you know.
It's, it's targets, and actually, one of the questions I was going to ask you is, can you define targets and and have you? And is it, is that word defined somewhere?
I don't, it's not a s- it's in the Department of Public, uh, Service Guidance on this process. And, um, you know, it, it's really just a sense of the order of the, the amount of electricity that we need to generate, um, uh, compared to where we are now. Um, so currently, uh, I think we have about five hundred thousand megawatt-hours of renewable energy generation. Um, and and the, the number that we need to get to is is, um, escaping me. But the, think of the targets as just, it it just gives you a sense of the order of magnitude change that we need to derive, that we need to get to. So there's not like enforcement associated with it. Um, and it it just, I, you know, I think it's good point of discussion to understand what that translates to in terms of facilities and doing the upfront planning with regions and towns so that we can help the state meet those comprehensive energy plan goals.
So, and I'm mindful of the time, but I was just going to try to maybe help segue. And you've developed a lot of proposed amendments to different sections of the plan. And you've done it based on your review of the checklist. So at least on some level, you're thinking that if the town of Shelburne incorporated this language and and there are some places where tables need to go in and some other things that we haven't, we haven't inserted. So, um, you know, at some point, those will get inserted. But if the planning commissioners reviewed that text, no problem if they agreed with every, with everything. But if, if there are disagreements with certain parts of it, a, how much can, can they disagree with? And let's just say, pull out, not include, and still think that there's a reasonable expectation of the plan being approved? Um, and what's the process? If they, instead of want to cut something, or maybe if they want to cut something and they want to tweak something, how many back and forths with you can, can they get? Before we formally submit the plan?
Yeah, so, when you review the checklist, the standards that have not applicable, I think are the standards where, um, you have some, some wiggle room. And if there are standards that you can't meet, provide a rationale for why, why you can't meet it. Um, Dean, to your point about if the town incorporates all the changes that I put in here, you would have assumed to meet the standard, I would say that's not completely accurate. Um, there's some portions of the standard that I have yet to get to, just because I don't have a good sense of what the town's position is on, on the citing. I mean, there's some citing language in there, but I don't think it's specific enough for the Public Utilities Commission to apply a, um, land use measure or a- other specific policies. Like, I think that is really what the, um, Planning Commission in the town needs to pay attention to, because that's what's actually going to be used when the Pu- Public Utilities Commission is reviewing, um, you know, applications for facilities. And so, you know, I would take a closer look at what I drafted in the energy section. I think that's just a starting point. And then I recommend looking at your, um, and it think, it's your natural resource element, you know, where you have statements about, um, I have it with me, you know? Protecting natural resources. And, you know, those are the land use measures that the Public Utilities Commission, um, you know, I think will look at in their decision for these facilities. Um, and so, you know, I know that the Public Utilities Commission really likes specific policies. So saying things like must avoid or shall not impact a particular natural resource would ensure that they're interpreting the land use measure as you intended. Um, and then you also need to be thinking about whether those land use measures um, in your natural resource section are essentially equally restrictive to all types of development. So if you allow residential development to impact a particular resource.
We can't carve out these facilities, in other words.
Exactly, exactly. So I think that that is the really important exercise here. Um, I mean, I think you have some really good language in your natural resource element, um, but adding, you know, so like, um, I'm looking at your statement here where it says, ensure that future residential development in the rural area is low density and designed to preserve and protect the scenic and natural resources and features of the area. I would review that statement and think about, well, if that was applied to renewable energy generation, how would you want it to read so that it's a clear, consistent standard? And when you're looking at your, your, uh, your land use measures in here, think in terms of if they were applied to renewable energy generation, would they give you the outcome that you were intending for?
I, I don't want to take our eyes off the ball, though, because we don't get to the point where the Public Utility Commission is going to give us heightened deference and look carefully at those policies unless we have the other stuff.
Exactly, yeah.
So, so it does seem to, to me at least, that job one is to still make sure that we have all of those other things. Then if we're getting all the feedback that, yes, this is good stuff, then the commission can turn its attention to those other policies to have them be as specific as they can possibly make them and equitably treat not just, you know, ener- energy. not just, you know, ener- energy developers, but everyone.
Yeah, I mean, so I would say that the content that I added, I think meets the one seventy-four standard to the best of my interpretation, the one thing is missing is that, you know, really looking at, um, the, the citing policy statements, cause there's not one.
Ordinance, I didn't see that picked up in here.
That separate ordinance isn't reflected in this.
Yeah.
We, the town adopted an ordinance pursuant to the old legislation, well, not some old.
So that's a, a screening ordinance?
Essentially, step back screening.
It was one of those that was pursuant to that law that
Yeah.
Yeah.
Was the kind of interim step to where we are today.
Yeah, and that, I mean, that automatically gets considered in their, in their decisions, but I Yeah, yeah, um, but I think mention of it in the town plan will, will, you know, also en- enhance that.
Yeah, I mean, any other highlights you wanna, while we have you here, raise for us? I mean, we won't go line by line here, since we don't have time to do that, but.
Yeah, um, I, not, not, not necessarily, I mean, really the highlight was that was about the land use measures, and really looking at the natural resource section and thinking in terms of renewable energy generation, um, you have the data, you know, the data's still kind of a moving target. Um, we will issue, um, you know, a revised version of it. So I think that, that, that is it, um, I guess, uh, you know, review the content that I drafted and you know, they're just suggestions, I don't know if they're necessarily appropriate for Shelburne, um. So, you know, take a look at that and, you know, edit it based on what fits within the town.
But would you say, though, that something that comes along with this territory uh, is this, this pressure, for I guess lack of a better word, for the plan to include policy language about things that, just generally speaking, the town doesn't have much control over? I mean, and even as you've written it, there, the question arose in my mind numerous times, and I'm writing down my notes that are over there, it's like, how, how is the town going to do that? I mean, and the other towns, two other towns evident, are doing this process as well, and what, are we on the same track, are we a little bit behind, are we ahead, how have they reacted if they've seen similar language, and I'm guessing they have?
Um, I mean, so, yeah, the, the two other towns that we're working with, their process is, is, is kinda different.
Was that Williston?
So we're, no, we're working with Colchester and Winuski, and so we did an initial review of Colchester's plan in light of the one seventy-four standards, but they're not quite ready to start drafting. Um, and so you're, you're further along, um, Winuski is starting from scratch, and so we developed an energy um, element for them to respond to, and we're gonna continue to offer assistance to our municipalities over the next fiscal year, this is a big part of our work program. So, you know, I, I think I've expressed to Dean, Dean, the July thirty-first deadline, that's really just a contractual deadline that we have with the Public Service Department, but we're committed to continue working with the towns and, you know, doing this back and forth and, and figuring out what fits.
And you're the, you're the lead, Jason, right?
Jason's the lead.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, is there a way to plug into the data process at all, or get any kind of insight? I'm mostly just curious, like what sort of metrics are being collected, and the, how the models are coming together, and?
I can send you the spreadsheet that was used to develop Shelburne's energy guide, if that's what you're, you're asking for, yeah. Yeah, we've sent that to many of our, of our towns, if you wanna get into, you know, just look at the formulas and get into the weeds, that's, that's fine.
Yeah, a lot of it is kinda to Kate's point, because I, I certainly hear the concerns, but at the same time, I don't view any of this as mutually exclusive. I, I think that it's gonna be a combination of things, and, and I tend to view it as conservation and moving more towards alternatives is the right thing to do, whether or not there's a formal target or anything, I think that's something we should all be doing. Um, but it also is really helpful to understand the background and how the data is being collected, and what metrics are being used to understand where things might be skewed in the wrong way, or not in the wrong way, I don't mean to, to be accusatory, but uh, how it influences policy and direction and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I mean, and again, the, the modeling that we have from LEAP, it's really, it's just a model, and it gives you a sense of where we are, and where we need to go, and over time, as we're, you know, tracking progress, we're gonna be working with Efficiency Vermont on, on actual data.
And Melanie, at the, at the regional level, the regional plan needs to be certified by the Public Utility Commission, is that right? Is that, where are we in that process?
So we're still working on our regional plan, um, the goal is to have
Is there a regional plan Ecos, or is that something different?
Same thing, yeah, so we're still working on updating the Ecos plan. Um, the, it will be adopted by June of twenty eighteen, so the, um, you know, our public hearing process will start in early twenty eighteen, and so once we have the Ecos plan adopted, then we can review town plans.
So to twenty eighteen, and Bennington County's been
Bennington got their energy determination, um, I think a month ago.
Right.
Yeah.
Good.
When you talk about the solar stuff, is there a?
Yes, in terms of metrics, is there some desire or goal, in terms of how much would be residential versus sort of I guess industrial, for lack of a better term, in other words, big arrays versus every house having some solar on it?
Yeah, that's a good question, so in your energy data guide, it does talk about what is the potential for rooftop solar? Um, and there's an updated number, I think that number is
Oh, is this, was that new spreadsheet?
It's in the new spreadsheet, yeah, yeah, so it does include both, like, utility scale solar and, and rooftop solar as well.
So is the power and energy, does that mean power is what is current, and energy is the potential, looking at these numbers?
Yeah, so the power is, um, is, um, I need to look at the chart, uh, yeah.
The, um, that new spreadsheet?
Or just the?
Or the energy packet? It's this one?
Yeah, so the energy is in megawatt hours, so that is what is, what is generated, and the power is essentially capacity.
I guess in terms of looking forward, um, you know, like, is there any way to map out, like, what the you know, if every house in Shelburne put, that, that could realistically do it, had some south-facing, did it, I mean, what is the energy carrying capacity of, I mean, if people were saying, wow, we really don't like these arrays, you said, okay, as a town, we want to encourage rooftop solar, you know, that's less intrusive is just kinda curious, you know, if every house had solar on it, would we be anywhere close to hitting any sort of targets or goals, or is that, you know?
So I have that data, so, um, the rooftop solar potential in Shelburne is eight thousand megawatt hours. And currently, um, Shelburne's energy generation target on the low end is twenty-three thousand megawatt hours, so and the, and the solar, the rooftop solar potential doesn't assume rooftop solar on every building, it's a portion of rooftop solar, cause not every house is south-facing, there's structural or, or technical constraints, so yes, I mean, rooftop solar is um, a method, a mechanism for, for achieving the target.
But it's only a third.
Yeah, it wouldn't get you there.
Yeah.
But then, alright, so we recognize then that wind is just astronomi- astronomically the greatest potential, but the Public Service Board didn't, wasn't that, didn't they make it a little bit more difficult?
Made.
Right?
Latest signs are, I think.
That, yeah, I, I'm just curious, I mean, I see the numbers, when you look at what the energy potential is, wind is clearly the biggest potential, but then with all the stuff going on at the state level recently, it seems like a lot of that's gonna get reduced significantly.
Yeah, it's hard to know how that is gonna land and how that is gonna affect this process. We haven't heard any guidance from the Public Service Department on, on that, on the impact of that.
So is there, do you have a data figure on if you were to increase connectivity in your community? Um, if there's, you know, with, let's say, within a, um, mile and a half or two mile radius? Is there any, um, kind of way to measure that?
So we're, we are planning to rerun the LEAP model to figure out um, how that affects our total energy consumption, um, kind of identifying what that vehicle mile traveled sweet spot is. Um, you know, but again, it's a, it's a fine level of detail, so it's, it's not anything that we, um, have been required to do through one seventy-four. Um, but
Kate, are you basically just getting, you're, you're wondering, is there data or modeling information that would illustrate that if there's a more clustered design, we're going to advance ourselves in this realm? And it may not be through the LEAP model, but maybe something as part of the transportation modeling? Because, I mean, the last transportation plan update did three distinct scenarios.
Well, you know, there's things like the walk score, stuff like that, I mean, this is not, I mean, people are measuring this, so I, I
Yeah, and we're
Just wondering if it has, if there's a way to translate this, I just, you know, to, to kinda piggyback off of what Andrew was saying, what if we decided to really aggressively pursue everybody having rooftop solar? So that, so we have twenty-three thousand that we are sort of, um, beholden to provide on some level, right? So, you know, that takes about maybe eight thousand away, and then I was, we're just kinda wondering, well, what, what's the number for if we increased multimodality, or, and, you know, more compact development, and had a plan that, you know, promoted smart growth, it, so, um, because we have, you know, most of our plan at, most of our regulations at the moment don't, but if we similarly got very aggressive towards that end, is there a number that we could, you know, four or five thousand, I don't know?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, our, we're working with the travel demand model, like you said, Dean, and figuring out what the preferred scenario is for a reduced vehicle miles traveled, and then bringing that into the LEAP model to see how that affects energy, but, I mean, doing that connectivity and walkability, it's part of this already. But it's not necessarily new generation.
Okay, but if the goal, it seems like it should get it, it's only fair to give us some credit for it, because if we are not using, if the goal is to not use fossil fuels, and I realize you're not like in charge of this, this is not, you're not the decider, as, as someone once said on this. But I'm just playing this out, if, if, um, um, if, if the goal is to reduce reliance on fossil fuels um, through more, producing more energy, so that you can drive instead an electric car is one way to do it. Another way to do it is to not have to have maybe a second car um, and be able to take the bus, or something like that, and so it just seems like it makes some sense, or, or have a bike, or have an electric bike, or something. And it seems like it, you know, instead of sort of, everybody gets a Prius, or whatever, um, it seems like there should be a little more uh, fine-grained approach to measuring some of that, cause there's so much interest in that, I mean, I, I, I don't think I'm this total outlier here.
Yeah, no, I, I agree with you, I mean, and through the Ecos Plan monitoring that we do every year, we are looking at vehicle miles traveled. Um, you know, so that is an indicator that we are paying attention to. Um, but currently, in the Act one seventy-four framework, we don't have a VMT target that the region and the town, towns need to be thinking about. Um, and, you know, my hope is, over time, as we're tracking progress, it's gonna be, uh, it's gonna be a suite of data, it's gonna be, you know, number of light bulbs switched out to LEDs, it's gonna be the number of electric vehicles, the number of heat pumps installed, um, and it, you know, uh, how transit ridership is increasing, the number of miles of sidewalks that are being built. I mean, we do a lot of that already in our Ecos scorecard.
How many vegetarians you have in your town?
Right, but it's hard to translate it to energy conserved.
Yeah.
I mean, we can, we can make some assumptions about it, it's just not currently within this framework, and again, it's this is a lot about, you know, doing the upfront planning process with municipalities so that, you know, when the Public Utilities Commission has given them substantial deference, the decision is a little bit more clearer, and, you know, asking the municipalities where you want renewable generation and where you don't want it, so where is it suitable, where is it not suitable? So that we can, you know, start to meet the comprehensive energy plan goals.
Okay.
I have a couple of comments, one is like, it seems to me there's a disconnect between supply and demand, the way you are measuring indicators, there are disconnect in terms of like how you are kinda focusing on that generation issues, in terms of like your renewable energy generation targets versus the consumption pa- patterns in terms of like, in kilowatts an hour consumed, and, uh, so the supply and demand disconnect needs to be resolved. Uh, it seems to me in, in your basic model, uh, so that it's fungible across different sectors, and not just necessarily focused on energy and transportation alone, or just the housing sector versus residential sector. So that's one comment, and secondly, I mean, it seems to me that, I'm not clear about like what type of market interventions, these are a lot of like market-driven dynamics, the prices associated with those, and so, for example, if you kinda like impose on every town, uniform, like solar and wind targets, but some towns might have better citing than others, so the towns on the hills, or versus like, say, offshore facilities, or um, amount of tree cover, for example, a lot of those factors can determine, so um, typically, like cap and trade mechanisms are more cost-effective, in terms of like having larger solar and wind generation with, as opposed to just like a uniform standard, that's more inefficient. So I'm not sure, like, if anybody's paying attention to the, those kind of like incentive mechanisms.
Yeah, um, I don't
Those are big picture questions.
Yeah.
So the first one, I, my understanding is it's the state's comprehensive energy plan that drives those targets, so I agree with you, right, that's completely supply-driven, so that's a conversation with the governor's office and the legislature, and and otherwise, if, if that's going to change, the second one, I
Yeah, in terms of citing, and maybe one town has a better, more of a resource than another. Um, it's a good point, um, we didn't necessarily factor that into our allocation of the target to a municipality, but it's, it's something that I, I can consider. Um, you know, so we have the regional target, and we apportion it out based on an average of the town's share of the county population and electricity consumption, and, um, didn't necessarily look at the resource availability in that particular town.
What, what was all the mapping for, then?
So the, the mapping is done
If we didn't look at sort of town-specific topography?
So the mapping is done, um, to look at what's available, or, you know, what the potential is from an acreage perspective, and then compare that to the target. To s- to give a sense on whether an entity has enough resource to meet the target.
Basic check.
It's kinda, it's a, it's a check, but the thing with using the resource as a factor in doing the aggregation, you lose the ability to be technology neutral that way, because the resources are technology-specific, we have prime solar and we have prime wind. And we're trying to give municipalities flexibility in this target, and giving, um, and providing a technology-neutral target, so that's why it's only based on population and electricity consumption.
Okay.
So, if we were to, we can't get rid of our population, but we can do something about our use of electricity. So, is it possible to reduce that twenty-three thousand?
Do we actually wanna increase our use of electricity, arguably? Because as we're decreasing other bad pieces of carbon, I'm just thinking, in my family, we just bought an EV, right? So we're gonna increase our use of electricity in a good beneficial way theoretically.
Yeah.
And that's what she's getting at, is that we have to increase the electricity because we're trying to transition off of off of the other fuels. But you can certainly then be more efficient in other ways, for sure.
It just, I think, Mrs. Wright, it's just, it doesn't get to the demand.
I mean, what I'm fascinated by is some of the Tesla battery type things, for example, right? So you got rooftop that's capturing that electricity and then you're able to store that locally and then feed that back into grid at different demands and things. So that, I think there's some really interesting, I mean, Green Mountain Power is all over this as soon as the Powerwall 2, they've got an agreement and they're not giving them away, but they're making them very cost-effective to add. So I think there's some tremendous opportunity that's out there for people to, you know, produce their own or produce a share, just piecemeal by your household. Not to mention towns as well, looking at sort of that piece of things.
So it's 8:30. Thank you for this update. My last question would be, Dean had sort of alluded to this. The process going forward, once we get into the nitty-gritty of tweaking and editing and you're open to further reviews and input? Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, that's helpful. I think there's.
Yeah, because I mean, we're doing our Ecos Plan as, as well, and so, you know.
So it's happening in tandem at some level.
It's happening in tandem and it's, you know, it's an evolving process and sort of.
Yeah, no, obviously, we're all learning.
Learning as we're going along.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Great. Any further comments, questions from Melanie while we have her? No. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, Melanie, you're, you're doing a great job.
You're doing great work for us. And thank you to the Regional Planning Commission as well for the continued efforts.
I did drive my own EV.
Okay. Last topic on the comprehensive plan for this evening is a continuation of our discussion of the future land use section. We've done some good work on Growth Areas 1 and 2. And we started to briefly discuss the rural district at our last meeting at a very high level. So tonight, I think what we're trying to do here is finalize Growth Area 2 update. And I, when I looked at this, I, I was not positive if the entire packet was.
But you had, you had indicated that you wanted to have a narrow slice of it. So it wasn't, it's not all of the future land use piece.
Okay, that's why I pulled out my old one.
So you said you wanted to zero in. And so it was what was, it reflected all the edits up to last Thursday. And the thing that was not addressed in your packets was whatever changes Susan Meegenberg was going to be making. And I have been trading emails with her the last few days. So I, she has access to the document, but I did not think bonehead move to print out for everybody. But I will pull up on the screen momentarily what should be reflected as her edits. Yeah, so this was edited as of a couple of days ago. But essentially, the.
So this reflects all of the Kate edits?
Knock on wood, it was everything through, following the conversation at the last meeting and reflecting the changes then. So this is, this is with those changes accepted in this PDF version. So certain things got shorter and certain things got longer.
Over there, Dean, I think I saw a typo in the very beginning. The goals.
Yeah, well, this was, this was how Kate had, had edited it, goals for this area. And, and so it broke out of the convention, but I didn't, I didn't change it. Is that what you're reacting to right there?
Yeah, the third line on your goals for this area. That third line, it says, "As such expensive municipal." I think that's supposed to be expansive.
Well, thanks.
That was actually, I think, something that, that I just, what I kind of reorganized, it had already, it had been in there.
But did you mean expansive municipal infrastructure?
No, I meant expensive, because it costs a lot of money.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right. I was thinking, I was reading her out.
Okay, so the intent was just to sort of make sure we have the, all the edits incorporated as of the last pass. This is the current revised clean version.
Right, and then what I can show you is places where in the last couple of days Susan has added.
Okay, yeah, let's look at that while we're all here.
Okay, so the first place I'm seeing her comment is where she writes, as one of the objectives, recognize that the village is situated within the McHabe's Brookwaters. While you focus and read it, it's.
Are we in the rural?
Oh, and actually, this is, she might have started, she might have made her comments for all three, the Village Center. And so she, she did make a comment in the Village Center, which was, we were just zeroing in on the Growth Area 2. And she doesn't have any edits that I see there. So, the edits that I see.
Okay.
We did pump that up a lot in the last meeting, so maybe she was okay with what we did.
That was her concern last meeting though, right? Was that we had talked about the Village Center and then indicated we would add something like this. But then you left, we said you would, but I don't think anybody ever told you you had to. So if she didn't see it, then she was worried. So this is now kind of retroactively putting it in where we said we would. Right?
Well, yeah, I, I had understood that she was going to be proposing some additional language in the Village Center Growth Area 2. And in time, the rural Growth Area, the rural area, I should say. But right now, the only place I'm seeing where she's made the edits is affecting Growth Area 1, the Village. And it's this language here.
So.
Are you having talk with her?
I have not, no, and I, I missed our last meeting, so I'm not up to date on.
Can you identify the Growth Area 2 in the map? I cannot see the clearly the boundaries.
Okay, Growth Area, I'm happy to show you those. So the Growth Areas, as in, are reflected.
Yeah, I have this map, but I cannot clearly identify.
So this is, whoops.
So it's just a bigger boundary around all of these issues or colored area?
Pretty much.
So.
I see.
So that's Growth Area 2 with the sub areas within it. And so it's basically, it's the area served by the municipal sewer service system or with access to it. There's some places, well, essentially runs down Spear Street, but it goes out and includes Beaver Creek.
Which is that little L shape?
Yeah.
Is that because that's on the sewer?
Yes.
You know, I wonder if it would, it's just, it's great to have Aziz seeing this with fresh eyes. He finds this to be confusing. And I have to say, I, I, I mean, I do too, but anyway, just. Yeah, so I was wondering, maybe we could have a, a map that just Growth Area and Growth Area. There's Growth Area 1 and Growth Area 2 and not, and then.
And I think there is one. I mean, yes.
Yeah.
I'm just trying to respond to his immediate question, which is where are the boundaries of this thing? And that's the first one that I got to.
So, so this is set on the sewer infrastructure. But that assumes like that that infrastructure is gonna stay constant in terms of your future projections? Or you're not looking at making changes into that or?
Twenty years ago, there was a very complex process that established the boundaries.
I see.
And it, multiple factors, some technical, some political. And there have been discussions of changing it and it hasn't changed because it's, it's hard to get a consensus on how it should change. But yes, yeah, Kate, I was thinking I had a, one that just shows the sewer service area. But let's see, I don't know if I've got it right here.
In fact, one of the objectives is to maintain the current boundary.
That's been the policy in the past, that's right.
Yeah.
So that will basically constrain it, but you're like saying you're on growth. At the same time, you're like constraining your infrastructure, so that's.
It's a smart growth tool.
I see.
But it also ends up putting pressure potentially on the rural area, which we've seen. So, you know, they can't find it there, you're gonna.
And.
We also learned that some of the natural areas within the existing sewer system, sewer service area are even more. Did you get it?
Yeah.
Well done. Are even more sort of pristine and important than we ever knew. So that's kind of thrown a, a bit of a wrinkle in, like, so right now, we're, we're thinking, okay, let's find, it's put the impetus on finding ways to use the land that we have remaining as efficiently and as sustainably as possible. But the hot potato of, should we reconfigure the boundaries? So far, we have not gone there because it's a hot potato.
You know, I, I just am trying to understand like, this is a big assumption that you're talking about growth, but then you're fixing your infrastructure, underlying infrastructure as constant.
Well, it's, we want.
That helps explain that.
We're trying to focus the growth in those areas within the sewer infrastructure.
And, and another challenge is that a lot of the Growth Area, it's been kind of hard to tell. The pattern of development has been somewhat similar to that in the rural area. And so, you know, if we really are intent on protecting the rural area, we really need to, you know, kind of look at that more closely and think differently about that. Because, you know, the, the development demand is, is, it's coming. It's coming from the north. It's like a Game of Thrones, right?
Beaver Creek is something that, like, how does that?
South Burlington is.
And when that happens, population, but we have said that we were expanding out into the rural area. And that's when the sewer district discussions took place.
So Beaver Creek was a forcing function to sort of put a constraint on it?
That was pretty much, and I think your husband was the chairman and the planning commission at that time.
Okay, so.
Was it that far back? Was it that far back?
Probably, yeah, I think so.
So Growth Area 2, I think we, we have the current version. If you haven't taken time to, to peruse it, give it another read over the next few weeks or in advance of the next meeting. I don't think we'll revisit it yet until we get to the public hearing on this section. The Rural District will be the next section that we'll jump into with the Natural Resources Committee. I think it probably makes sense to do a deep dive on the Transportation and Energy sections now that we have Melanie's intro and a little more context and table setting around what the changes are. It's probably worth us going line by line and making sure we have thorough input into those edits since, as she mentioned, you know, she's, she's drafting a lot of this and it's not quite customized or tailored for what we're trying to do. So we really need to lean in on, on the policy pieces there and react to what she's proposed. And then I'll just take time to go through. So between.
The only other thought I had was if Jason was willing, I mean, he could do his own edit of her edits and then propose the package to you and save people some time. And he could highlight the things that you think are the most.
Even better, right? If we have sort of the lead's input in in advance of the next meeting so that we can.
Now, the, the fact that those edits are in there that she did, would it be better just to comment instead of change language? Because if we do comment, then we could go through as a group and either accept, resolve, reward, whatever.
Yeah, combination, if you want to edit and comment or however you think it will be the most productive to, to get through it.
How can we now access, like, I've obviously been shared the Parks and Rec piece. Is there a way to then be able to see everything everyone else is working on?
Um, I've been, I've been, just as a practical matter, giving people view privileges to the documents that they're not editing and giving the edit privileges to the limited number of people who are doing them. So you should be able to see the edits.
But how can I, where do I find the other ones?
Oh, okay, I sent out a, I thought I sent out a link that had it, the view privileges, but I'll make sure that you have those. I thought I had.
So I will not be here for the next meeting, if, if, assuming the next meeting is on August 10.
Well, I think that's what we're gonna talk about, so I'm just trying to think about what.
I'm in charge of transportation, so just wanted to.
Right, that's what I'm, I'm just trying to think about. So we have Transportation and Energy to do a deep dive. We have the Rural District to do a deep dive between those three. That's a full meeting. So that takes us into, when is that meeting going to happen? Traditionally, we have one meeting in August. I think we should continue that tradition. I'm open to a conversation about it. I will not be here for the second meeting in August.
24th.
For the 24th. Dean will not be here. You're out the first meeting in August.
I think I'm out both, actually.
Oh, you're out both?
Look at the calendar.
Okay.
Yeah.
Kate, you're out the first.
I'm out, yeah.
You're out the 10th.
So, 3-2.
Yeah.
I have a possibility in the latter one. I'm not sure yet.
Of not being there. But you would be here for the 10th.
Why don't you guys stick with the 10th? And, I mean, I think, I feel like I've kind of made my points about energy exhaustively tonight. So I don't think I really have that much to add.
But I think if, like, I may have missed the email, I'm looking. But if I have view privileges to what people are doing, whether it's, you know, suggestions, edits, comments, you can keep track from a distance pretty easily that way to know what's going on. You can, assuming it gets updated.
Yeah, I, I think something just clicked with maybe why, if you and others are not seeing it, why that is. But I can fix it.
Okay. So the 10th, it sounds like the same, or you?
10th would work for me, 24th, there is a slight possibility, I might be going to Saskatoon.
Saskatoon.
Jason, you're around the 10th?
I am around the 10th. I was thinking at the end of the month might get problematic, yeah.
Okay. So it sounds like we'll do the 10th. We'll tackle energy, we'll jump into the Rural District. Does that still work out for you and?
I believe it works for me.
Sean?
I don't know what the status is. A lot of our committee tends to disappear in August.
Okay. Well, if Sean's available, if Don, if others are around, at least let.
Peg, I think, are two of the people who tend to not be available in parts of August, but I wasn't.
But their meeting with this, their presentation of the Select Board is two days before, same week on the Open Space Plan. And he just confirmed that they will both be there.
Okay.
All right, maybe we'll get lucky and, and have him here that week, which would be great. So we'll plan on Energy and the Rural District on the 10th. I don't know if there is another smaller section, Dean, that we might flirt with looking at?
Perry had worked on childcare.
Perry had worked on childcare.
And so there, there's that, could be an easy, easy one to cover. That's one of the smallest bite-sized pieces.
Maybe include it?
Sure.
Right?
Yeah, I mean.
We might not get to it, but at least introduce it, if people have it in the packet, they can read up on it, and he's already made edits?
I think so.
Okay.
If I'm remembering right.
Okay. And then schedule wise, you included the illustrative schedule, did you wanna just do a check in on that, or are we?
Remind people.
Okay, yeah.
That time passes by.
Right, but I think we're, are we tracking relatively well in your opinion, or we, do we need to speed things up, or have you?
Um, I I didn't make that assessment.
Not thought that much about it.
But I think that you're making decent progress and that it's going to accelerate. So I I have no complaints, I just wanted people to be, you know, reminding themselves of the schedule.
Yeah.
And particularly as we get into things where there are some substance, there's some, you know, significant substance to the discussion to. Go to the select board or go to to Joe and say, just heads up, this is a conversation that's taking place, you didn't want any surprises, so if we have questions, ask.
Yeah. And when we, when we get to the point of a public hearing, will there be a, is it a a red line that I assume will will circulate? I mean, some of these could be heavy.
Yeah.
Not super helpful red lines where?
That's, that is a, it's something I've been thinking about, this, people that tend to care most about red lines, in my experience, have been select board members, certain select board members. And less so the public.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, anyone that's familiar with the current plan will typically wanna see what's changing, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And um, particularly as time, if the the more compressed we become at the end, then more important it will be. What I'm guessing will probably end up happening is I'll just use software that'll, that'll, whatever format we end up in, it'll do the red line comparison across file types.
It's easier for us to answer questions to.
Yeah.
Just like a dip, something like this is different.
Yeah.
Okay, next item on the agenda.
Oh, yeah, love that.
Is commissioner questions and comments. Know if anybody has any comments or questions? The one thing, well, I, it's sort of town plan related, but I I forgot to bring it up that we've talked a little bit about with some of us is. Quarries and mining, you know, where that might, where that conversation might layer in to, is it energy, is it natural resources, is it?
Might be natural resources.
Yeah. Yeah, so I think that's. A topic that there's been some interest in spending a little bit of time on and educating ourselves, so when. When I take the lead on that section, you can expect to see. Some new content on that, I think, at least for discussion, not necessarily inclusion in the final draft, but.
So taking a long view on.
What the role of future quarry, like a new quarry or?
There's definitely been some statewide.
Probably not new quarries, but um, resumption of or intensification of use or expansion of use of existing quarries. I read some, something recently that that indicated that those have become incredibly valuable properties because, you know, they don't, you can't just sort of like start a new one very easily. At least not in New England.
Right.
Um, and for now, so um, so that that has made existing quarries. Extremely valuable or have potential value, and so, you know, just, I think it's worth thinking about what that might mean. You know, we had a little bit of a surprise with the value of the industrial property by the railroad, and I've been kind of thinking, you know, gosh, are there any more? Sort of, you know, things that could kind of.
Surprise us.
Surprise us.
Yeah.
That may, we might not be able to regulate in similar way that we were, you know, very limited in what we could do about the railroad, because they're federally preempted. There's some similar kinds of.
Federal regulation.
Yeah, things that ex, privileges that extend to mining, so, you know, just, it's worth thinking about.
Meaning like the old eighteen seventy four mining law or whatever that patented and it's yours?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's a good call out, you know, we, we at least owe it to the town to educate ourselves about the topic and explore it. And see if it's worth incorporating some language in there.
Because, you know, many people live near those now. And, you know, what could happen in the future?
Yeah, I mean, you hear enough complaints about the noise of the rail place that quarry is not a quiet spot.
Right.
Part of that is, you know, mapping.
Where mineral rights are owned, then that's, people would be surprised, I think.
Yeah.
The other right ownership of existing mineral.
Mineral rights in the proximity of the.
Right, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a whole, anyway, it's a whole topic that's worth a little bit more, you know, thinking about.
The last item I had is just, the housing subcommittee still does have a vacancy, so I would encourage anyone that. Knows people they can put in a headlock and wanna join that group to let me know.
What about?
I've done some preliminary outreach and haven't been overly successful, so I need to just post something on Front Porch Forum and.
Would you ruffle too many feathers if you suggested the two time failed candidate to join us here?
I don't, I'm certainly open to having that conversation with him if he's interested, so, yeah, I mean, I think it's a good idea.
Just think in terms of people who have expressed a desire to be here.
I think it's a good idea, right, I mean, that. It's a good suggestion, so I'll reach out to him. But keep it in mind, if anybody. Runs into anyone who is anxious to jump on a town board. It's a subcommittee of our committee that was initially tasked with developing really this data driven booklet around housing in Shelburne, that's about to be. Finalized and polished that you'll see soon, hopefully.
Have we, a different topic, have we gotten any uptake from sort of the developer world for the?
The form zoning?
Well, the the meeting that we wanna have, the sort of review meeting.
That, that was.
Talk about that, you wanna talk about that in other business, or?
Um, I was thinking, we can talk about it whenever.
Yeah, only because I. About it now, yeah, I mean, we met Tuesday and it was, it was a small group, it was probably, what, ten people? Maybe less, maybe eight, nine. Non-planning commission or staff member showed up, so it was a a good group, I think.
This is where you had reached out to people that are.
Exactly, yeah, so we did that Tuesday night.
Most likely wanna utilize it.
Right, yeah, sort of this focus group that was intended to really just tease out some of the the bigger issue. Bigger problems or opportunities within the current draft. I mean, my, and my reactions are, I thought it was productive, I think it was time well spent, I think there, I wasn't surprised. By any of the commentary that came out necessarily, I think it did. Convince me that we may have gone a little bit too far on some of the prescriptive. Detail around what we were trying to do there and.
Like material that you can and can't use or?
Yeah, I mean, whether, you know, conditional uses, just as an example, you know, we we tagged a lot of things as conditional use that.
Well, I think in terms of opportunities that we learned, they were very interested in in the housing and in in um, the potential to to add housing. And indicated that sort of forcing you to have mixed use at the outset might be, might not serve that end, might be off putting. So that's, that was something to think about.
Meaning for that, their ability to sell it, that people wouldn't wanna live in mixed use initially.
Or or just it, just the, to have, to have the demand for retail there, you know, it just might not make sense.
Right.
So I think we need to think a little bit more, I I found it very interesting, a little more flexibly about how we incentivize things. But I still like the idea of of creating a path so that something could change into something that we ultimately would like to see more of. Because I still like the idea of the nodes and the centers that we're creating. So so maybe, maybe something doesn't start off as a kind of node right away, but it can, we we don't wanna prevent it from turning into a node. Twenty five, thirty years from now.
Demand for the node idea could come from increased density of housing around it, they're gonna demand.
That's exactly where.
Services that, hey, now we're living here, we need services.
That's it, that's exactly where it will come from, so how how do we, you know, look at the code incentivizing that first? With then allowing it to morph into something else in in eventually, and. Yeah, and then there was, there was also some concern about parking and fire access and things like that, and would. Our idea of having shared parking and a lot smaller footprint for impervious surface be something that would actually fly with the fire chief and things like that? And so that, that was information that they said they would like to have more clarity and assurance about upfront before, because the last thing they wanna do is come in. And then find out, oh, guess what, you know, so they gave us some feedback on that, which was very useful.
Because the fire trucks wouldn't have enough room to be able to get in there or turn around or?
Well, well, that's the argument, but, you know, the 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 question then also becomes, you're in a sewer serviced area, you have ready water right there. How, you know, do it, how important is it to build a built environment? That is, you know, the one in one, you know, five hundred thousand percent chance that this place is gonna catch on fire? So we build our entire built environment based on that, you know, where.
Right.
So so it's, I think, again, finding that middle ground.
It was a good call out as a risk, right, from the developer perspective, they're like, great, we spent a lot of money, and then I have, you know, the fire chief come in and say, hey, this is not gonna work, guys.
Yeah.
Right.
And they're like, how do we know that when we sort of, we need to know way, way, way before this thing ends up in a conditional use review where the chief comes in and says.
So so the recommendation was to bring, you know, ha, start having conversations with that person now, so that, you know, are, is that person even aware that we have changed the rules, you know? Quite possibly not, you know?
Right, it was sort of suggested that probably not.
Right, yeah.
Well, but it's, yeah, it's also that classic example, right, like a road engineer is gonna wanna make the road really wide, because that is safest for cars versus looking at, well, we actually want bikes and this, you know, and so.
Exactly.
The fire person's looking at it from a very narrow lens, right, so, yeah, how do you?
Public safety is paramount.
No, agreed, but how do you, how do you balance it, right, so you take that extreme, then you end up with ugly, or you have some blend.
Yeah. I mean, there was also, the other big theme seemed to be this, you know, negative reaction to some of the stormwater. Regulatory pieces that we were layering in, trying to sort of dual track state standards that they said, listen, we have enough coming at us, we we know the state requirements, and now we have a municipal requirement that. Yeah, it may be the same now, but it may actually, what if they start diverging, right, at some point in time, which they may? How do we manage that, it's just one more thing and cost to sort of deal with, so that was something to think about, right?
Yeah.
And we, we spent a lot of time on that stormwater.
Right.
Drafting and conceptually and sort of building in, and even in this two point O version with Amy's work, so.
Having a utility, which, you know, I I I don't know exactly where Amy's going with the the things that she's proposing right now. But I have the impression that she is anticipating that at some point we might have a utility, a stormwater utility. And so there might be, you know, like, well, here's what you can do now, and then if you get a utility, here are some of the opportunities that you can think about. You know, that would would give you more ability to to control some of this, including, you know, really. Taking it, the hydrology of the area into account and and maybe setting up a system where somebody who has fabulous. Ability to sequester stormwater, maybe they get, you know, they're they're incentivized and they're paid for it in some way. To not develop or to develop on a very small footprint so that as much of that land is preserved.
But that's not how it's structured now.
No, but I think she was, she, we talked about that as as something, as an opportunity to try and, yeah, yeah.
On stormwater basis.
I mean, the the bottom line seemed to be more flexibility, right, like, let the market sort of determine what's going to be successful. And don't try to prescribe this specific building type with, you know, retail on the bottom or X square feet of of something, which. When I left, I started to think, maybe we went a little too far with it, that was my.
But housing, huge opportunity.
Housing seems to be.
Yeah, because I ran into.
A short midterm.
I ran into John, yeah, John Pizzegalli the other day and asked him about it, and he's like, oh, that's been on my radar stream, when is that, and I was like, I think it's tonight.
Yeah, no.
And he's like, well, and I said, well, if you can't go, is there anybody from PC that we should target? And he said, there actually is, there is a person or group to his whole, you know, job is sort of assessing code and understanding, so he said, that would be a person to steer it to.
Yeah, I mean, the more input we can get from anyone like that, the better, it doesn't need to be at that meeting specifically, but if they're willing to even look at a section and sort of.
Couple of people whose meetings before ran late, and so they couldn't make it, although I don't think John was, well, anyway.
Yeah.
No, I think he just missed it.
And it was somewhat short notice in the middle of summer, so, but I think it was good, Dean, I don't know if you have any other thoughts or comments from, you were there the whole time.
Just to give a sense of who was there, Justin Dexter from Redstone, who I thought brought a lot to the conversation, Evan Langfeld, who. I've known for a while, but didn't know he was as involved in South Burlington's form based zoning, which was good to hear, so he came there with a, I think, a good background. Brian Precor, who's been following this and I think could speak from a valuable perspective. Bill Posey, a smaller scale housing guy, Jack Landry, who, if he made comments, I didn't hear hear them very much. A couple of residents, not developers, but, you know, owners of property, the Collins, John DeBrul from Auto Master. So it was a good, it was a good mix.
Yeah, and I guess the other thing was get the word out, right, let's make sure that we're sort of actively marketing this and communicating it out and and selling it at some level, otherwise, nobody will ever know about it. And that's been one of the things that I've been harping on with with Brandy's team, is to make sure that we don't lose sight of that final piece of how do we message all this work that we've done and.
You know, there might be some kind of thing, I don't know, with the business roundtable or something, that, you know, one of us has a relationship that way, where.
Yeah.
Somebody could do a, maybe, you know, when we were getting this underway, I mean, I gave a lot of presentations at the Rotary Club and just to try and get.
I think it's a good idea.
The Shelburne Business and Professional Association, but to to now sort of, you know, you can just do like a little, have a little, you know, little slideshow or something of the greatest hits and.
Right.
Just do a quick little interview. So I I think as we move this thing along, that should be something that we should think about, people we know.
Were any of them surprised to know that it existed, or was it sort of?
That the code did?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
I think they, they don't know much about it, some of them aren't playing in Shelburne all the time, so they weren't as familiar with the local market, but. They seem interested, but they also seem concerned about not having enough flexibility and really deterring. Developers from pursuing application, exactly, they just stick with standard and sort of know what they're getting into, and they don't quite see the benefit, is the. One of the takeaways, but again, a small subset of people, so I don't wanna extrapolate and turn it into.
No, but I think that's a fair.
More than it is, but it's real, it's on the ground commentary from people that are living and breathing this day in, day out, so.
I have a question, um, the Natural Resources Council, I guess, is um, doing a reevaluation of wetlands in Shelburne, and I'm wondering if. The form based code, as you've designed it. Has regulation in in it, or. I don't know, designations in a way that if the wetland designations change, the code is still up to date, because. The. The placements that you're allowing are related to. Where a wetland might be as opposed to to a specific site as it is designated today.
Yeah, because I was just trading messages with Brian Shoup. V N R C has filed the petition to change the classification of the La Platte Wetland Complex, so it's a specific wetland complex, that's all that they've proposed. That's outside, although I'm trying to get the final map that they submitted to the state, because the state is slow in getting it to me. It doesn't affect the area within the overlay district, and there are, I think, seven class one wetlands statewide or five or, it's a small number. So the likelihood of there being another petition that would affect a wetland that's in the overlay district is, I think, very, very small.
So they're looking to upgrade La Platte?
There, they are petitioning, so they were asking the state to consider changing it from a class two to a class one. And they have mail, they've submitted the application and it takes months for it to be reviewed. They, V N R C, has done a mailing to property owners, and that's how I came, became aware of the fact that it was moving ahead because someone who received one. of the fact that it was moving ahead, because someone who received one asked me questions about it. There will be an opportunity for public comment, and one of the things I'm imagining is that the Natural Resources Committee would make a recommendation to the select board on the town's position concerning that change. In terms of material impacts, one of the impacts is the change in the buffer size from 50 to 100 feet. But one of the things I'm hoping to do with the GIS layer is to be able to show people, this is the boundary, this is the current buffer, and this is what it would be if it changed in classification.
Mm-hmm. The buffer from the wetlands delineation.
As a, as a class one wetland, the regs elevate the protection and say, we don't just stay out of the wetland plus 50, we stay out of the wetland plus 100.
Got it. Interesting. Great.
Although, of course, the elephant in the room is that, you know, we have a multimodal salt shed facility right smack in the middle of it. But I don't, they would, they wouldn't have mattered anyway, I don't think, right? They would have been exempted from that.
Right, it's only, right, that's a state law that it would not be bound to.
So.
Unless something changes.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Other business, Dean, I know you had a couple of things to.
Well, we were going to mention Shelburne Day.
Yes. Shelburne Day is August.
August 19.
19th. If anybody is interested in manning the table. That's the week I'll be away, so I won't be there, but that's Saturday, August 19th. Last year, we did a table.
Yeah, the town has a tent or more than one tent. And you can, the commission can come up with a display, but anyway, looking for people to do it.
If there's interest, I mean, we don't need to do it if, I mean.
I remember seeing you manning it last year.
Yeah.
You looked thrilled.
Probably sweating in the middle of the.
I mean, it was a really cold day that day.
Was it? Yeah.
It was hot. I mean, how much value did you guys get out of it in terms of getting the feedback?
I think we talked a little bit about the form-based code, I think. Can't remember what else we had out there.
Uh, there were a few different things.
Images-wise.
But the form-based zoning, I think, was a big.
The design review guidelines, maybe, had been updated.
There were copies of that.
Yep. You know, we had some material out there, it's more kind of meet and greet, and it was just hanging out with a couple of the select board members and other.
Former select board members.
Former select board members.
President.
It does seem like there's.
Right.
Some need, but, yeah.
But if anyone's interested, I, I would say just reach out directly to Joe. We don't have to do it formally. I think the select board will be there, so if we just tag on to theirs, just let Dean and Joe know, so we can have a, a town plan there or something, just to let people know, hey, we're just in the middle of updating the town plan, so get involved or.
Yeah.
And pick an hour that you can man it, sort of thing?
A couple of hours.
Yeah.
Sure.
The time flies, it goes really quickly.
After you, after you grab your maple snow cone, Andrew, you can.
That's, that's important. My egg sandwich.
And the other thing.
I need the egg sandwich first.
Yeah.
Aside from the Shelburne Day, just mentioning that at their meeting on Tuesday night, the select board warned for a public hearing, some ordinances, and one of them touches on a topic that you may have been hearing circulate, having to do with an ordinance that would affect businesses, vaping stores, head shops and things like that, or a sale of CBC products, cannabinoids and things like that. So that was warned. Also was warned amendments to a truck and traffic ordinance that the town already has. And then the third was hazardous materials.